...of the Woodford County Board of Education. Everyone's here but Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson has advised me that he will be here, but he'll be a little bit late. The first item on the agenda is the data review discussion. I will turn that over to Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. We had a fairly lengthy discussion back in December, but didn't quite get finished. So what we thought we would do is to pick up where we left off. And we had gotten to some slides for all of our schools, but there's quite a number of them. And so we thought we would have Mr. Asher kind of highlight one in particular. It's the school where he served as the building principal and would be able to kind of share with you what all is involved in that and then how our schools utilize that information. And then we will then move into, I think, some of the questions that have been answered or asked at the previous meeting. We'll go through those and then Michelle Kason is here to address some of the areas in gifted. So, Mr. Asher, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so picking up where you left off in December. And as he said, there's a number of this type of graph that are in your packets and in the slide, forty-eight to be exact. So I'm not gonna, certainly not gonna go through every one of those. But just want to explain this one in particular. This would be overall for all students reading based on K-Prep and it is trend data over time. It dates back to thirteen, fourteen. Found this report in particular very useful as it illustrates very easily the performance or, excuse me, the outcome by performance level over time. So the green represents your proficient students, blue distinguished, so on and so forth. So at Northside in particular, what I can speak to how we use this was first and foremost by our lead team, in case we call that our NTSS team, to look at those trends over time. Particularly, you know, in the year and now, we're looking at three years in particular based on some initiatives that we have put into place to see what kind of results we're getting there. So you start with your lead team, on down to with this particular one, we have a reading correction, or a reading team who does the same thing. What kind of strategies we have in place, what type of curriculum changes we've made, and then ultimately on down to the grade level. Again, found these very helpful to plot our numbers over the years and what progress we have made. In your packets and in the PowerPoint, it goes on to show different subgroup type of breakdowns for the same type of trend over time. But that's how we use that. One, to look at the initiatives we put in place, what kind of results we're getting and what sort of changes we need to make moving forward. Any particular questions on this graph or any others that you have as related to K-Prep?
I don't really have a question about the graph. But I did want to say that I went back and reviewed our December sixteenth meeting, that we did the first part of the data. And I was sad to see that as a board, we sort of failed to celebrate the success of the data and of the students at that meeting. And so I did want to just say how proud I am of the accomplishments of the teachers, the staff, the administrators, the students, the parents. Our district had a high school that was four stars, a middle school that was four stars, Northside that was four stars. Southside, Huntertown, and Simmons were all three-star schools. And I just think sometimes it's easy to forget when you expect success and you expect great things. It's easy to forget to celebrate that. And I just want to say thank you. It's amazing.
That's greatly appreciated. Yes, we were proud of ourselves, I'll be honest, because a lot of hard work goes into that. But we fall into that same trap where we are just looking at how we can continuously improve and sometimes we fail to celebrate at the school level. So again, thank you for recognizing that. Any other questions?
I will say this data is provided by the Association of School Councils. So that's something that comes along with our membership with them. And so we certainly appreciate having it broken down like this by the subgroups and by grade levels. And like I said, there's no telling how many of those charts that are in that for you. But again, what we wanted to do was try to highlight one to say this is how our schools utilize the information that we have.
I would just like to kind of reiterate and make sure that I'm clear, Mr. Hopkins. This is from grade to grade. So it's not, it's comparing last year's third graders to, it's not comparing the same students. It's comparing this year's third graders to last year's third graders as opposed to seeing how those same third graders from last year did in fourth grade. Whether they kept their, you know, gains, losses, or whatever. So it's not correct when I look at this, but that is not...
That would be done through the growth piece. The charts that you would look at, this is based on proficiency. So there are charts that look at growth in particular. But what this does show is if you look at 2016, seventeen, that's all third, fourth, and fifth together. So in 2017, eighteen, you still have two of those grade levels in that group the following year and then incoming group of third. And then you're seeing the following year, again, still two of the grade levels the same.
Okay.
So...
And then let me, is that right after this? This one would illustrate exactly what you're asking.
Yes, yes. And we did look at that last week, I think towards, we did.
Yeah, because we took it out of order and did this one.
Right. Because it does, the blue, or the color represents the same class.
Correct.
And how did you think that data was, Mr. Hopkins, as far as comparing?
I mean, overall, I think there was some, there's some real positive, particularly on the novice reduction over time. There's some, a little bit of staggered results in the proficient and distinguished. But again, when you look at, if you look at them over a five-year period, over a four-year period, there was some growth in most all classes. So again, it's something that helps us watch that over time. You know, the thing that you always have to factor into is that you do have students leave, you do have students move in, even if it's the same grade level that you're comparing one year to the next. But this does allow us to track that over time to see progress that either we're making or if there's an area that we really need to address.
I do like this slide. Apple style, it's much as possible. Okay.
Okay, I'll hand over to Ms. Kason. Or do we want, I'm sorry.
This is just some of the specific questions that was asked in the first day of the meeting. This has all been sent to you, but this is our specific questions.
I think I'm just not understanding some of them. So why are the number of all schools different for different demographics of students?
Now, every school has a big enough subgroup for it to count.
So of the two hundred and eighty-six schools in Kentucky...
High schools.
High schools. Only ninety-three have a big enough population to be statistically...
We have about ten in the junior class. And Martha, what was the state average this year?
Oh, twenty...
Twenty-two or twenty-point-one?
Twenty-point-one was what I was gonna say. Thank you.
And do we know for those other demographics what the average was?
Twenty.
For African-Americans was twenty, the ACT. Like for the other demographics listed or separated out. So for African-Americans, our average was seventeen-point-nine. What was the, in those other ninety-three schools, do we know the average on that?
I don't.
Okay. That's funny. Maybe we can get that, be interested to see.
And this year's ACT tests will be the first ones that have had the two years. Okay. So we'll see how that is affecting. And do we do any sort of an assessment at the beginning of the class for the students that are taking the ACT prep class and then in assessment? The class at the high school?
Yeah, it's just for the ACT prep class. They test all throughout, they practice test. I'm not sure if they have AP there. But I know that those kids are probably based on their benchmarks as an opportunity.
Okay.
They also have an opportunity this year, we're doing the Alex test for the first time. And that is a test that will give them math ready. Student hasn't hit benchmarks on math, they take this Alex exam and it will work with where the student is and give them units to study and practice test. And then the student can test twice a year and then five times. And if they hit benchmark, the university will recognize as being knowledge.
Oh, wow. And that it's done during that ACT prep time?
That is an additional IC and math class.
Okay, so it's a separate block?
That's in addition to the ACT prep.
Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Ewing.
I was just gonna ask, on average, how many students do we have in those sections? Are they...
I don't know how many sessions.
I was just gonna say, Martha, I really appreciate the, just the dedication and the resources that the high school, and I don't know if it's a side case decision or, you know, I know some of it comes from the board and probably some from the curriculum office. But I really appreciate the opportunities. All four of my children are at the Woodford County Schools. And my oldest three children didn't have the opportunity, if they weren't being benchmarked, to be in a class like that and to have those resources. They didn't have the opportunity to have that Alex test you were just talking about that could be utilized by the college as a score. And then they certainly didn't have the opportunity to take that test as a sophomore because I think, you know, data clearly shows that when, it's an equity issue. So when you allow children to get familiar with that test and to practice and to do some of those things, that does help raise the scores. And it does help just familiarize them with the test and, you know, just the entire day because it can be a little lonely, I think. And for us to be able to provide that to sophomores as well as juniors, I think is wonderful. So thank you.
Those sophomore tests is a huge opportunity for our kids.
Here you can kind of see our transition readiness, which that makes up those who have finished the pathway and passed the assessment at the end of that pathway, along with students who are college-ready based on the ACT. So our percentages are going up. Obviously, we still want to continue to move toward a hundred percent. That's the ultimate goal. And, but again, I think there's been a renewed emphasis on our career and technical programs, I think even more so this year. And so fully anticipate that those numbers will continue to climb.
Do we have a goal on this? I think we did, on what, this is like college or career-ready basically, right? Is that what that is or is this just to do with career-ready?
This is both combined.
So when you talk of college or career-ready now, it's called transition ready?
It's called transition readiness.
Right. Do we have goals set or percentage?
No.
Okay.
And we currently have seventy-four students enrolled in the technical school programs in Fayetteville. And this was the result of the Wednesday program. So you can see that there were six total sessions, so one hundred and sixty-nine of the two hundred and seventy-three students who attended one day. They were there at least three of those. Again, we did not see necessarily rate growth or percentile growth when they tested on math. Part of that is, that's not necessarily the intent of the Wednesday program. It is more for enrichment. And again, you can see the results from...
So these are, these are the kids that were not in that targeted curriculum?
Well, some of the one hundred and sixty-nine kids would have gone Tuesday and Thursday as well, but it's hard to separate those out. And so, but that is the overall from the students who attended at least fifty percent of the sessions.
But did we get last time?
Did we get the Tuesday and Thursday?
Right, we got the targeted, yeah.
Yes. Ms. Kason?
I'd like to start any discussion about data, just talking about kids because I think it's easy to look at numbers and forget we're talking about kids. So I just brought pictures from yesterday. We spent yesterday with fourth and fifth graders, learning what advocacy and lobbying are. So we spent the day in Frankfurt at the State Capitol. We're at the Historical Society in the morning, doing a learning lab called Twills and Bills and then learning Kentucky history. Then we went to the new State Capitol where we went to the Gifted Proclamation, which you can see on the left, and heard from the governor and Rocky Adams, Cadkins, and some other people that were there. And then we went on a Capitol tour and we got to go on the floor of the House and meet with Joe Gravis and the kids got to ask questions and ask all kinds of really actually difficult questions. And they got to learn about bills that are sponsored by him and it was a really good, it was really good. And then we got to go to the Senate. We had gallery passes for the Senate. And Julie Carroll, Sergeant Julie Carroll recognized us from the Senate floor, so they got to stand up and be recognized. And then we ended our day going to the old State Capitol and doing some hands-on things at the old State Capitol with the focus of the day really being advocacy and learning to lobby and advocate and learning how government works and how higher-level supports you're learning. So just like to start with the kids, so there you go.
Which group was it?
This was fourth and fifth grade gate at Simmons. Yeah, so there's one, there's kids. I was not here in December, I was on medical leave for a broken back. Yay! So I watched the board meeting multiple times and kept detailed notes of the questions you asked. I'm trying to address all of them. The first, the data on the left is what was presented in December. And what you had asked is how that compared to statewide data. So I worked with Deanna Shaken, who is the new gift coordinator of the state, and pulled that data for you. Yeah, because you're asking about excellence gaps and how we compare to state excellent gaps. So I'll give you just a second to look at them. This state data's on the right. So we're pretty consistent with state data in terms of excellence gaps. And if you look at them nationally, it's pretty consistent across the board. Dr. Jonathan Plucker, who I've been to multiple sessions who are talking about excellence gaps, it is just pervasive across the board. But it is something that in the two and a half years that I've been to here, that we've been committed to, it was talked about when I was hired. So it has been a focus. And there definitely are areas to celebrate, particularly the lack of excellence gap there is with our free and reduced lunch kids. If you look at it at the state data, you know, it's, there's a very large gap in identification and we are, we are right on. So that is to be commended, the work of the people in the district that have eliminated that barrier for kids. There are some other, I think, that are amazing. We've worked really hard with English language learners to work on identification of under-identified populations using different kinds of measures to identify giftedness and what that looks like using the National Association of Gifted Children's CME. It's a teaching people how to look for gifted characteristics outside of your norm, looking at your personal biases or biases and kind of tackling that because we tend to look for giftedness in the way that we see giftedness. And there's just so much more to it. So are there any questions about that data?
You should send us that slide.
You have, yeah. You should have it. They have, yeah, it's in the, okay. It's, I think, just at the very bottom. I think they added it at the bottom. If not, Martha, we'll get it to you right now. Yeah, it's not on my page. Okay.
I do really commend your focus and I appreciate so much what you do and your team does. I really think that, you know, even with the Equity Audit, it really highlighted the work that you've been doing and continue to do when you're looking at all the different populations and making sure that there's equity with our gifted and talented. I appreciate the different kinds of assessments and the time and the energy that is spent making sure that everyone has equal opportunity. That's wonderful.
There's definitely still room for growth. I mean, you can see it, the data speaks very clearly about areas of growth and we know what those areas of growth are and their focuses for area of growth. And in all honesty, that starts at a pre-K level. So it starts from the moment that they enter the door and really it starts at a community level before that. But for us, it's, in teachers, it starts at a pre-K level with access to talent development, you know, like things that are working in primary grade. So that's really where it starts. If you want to improve access and things at the high school, it starts in pre-K programming. So...
Yeah, I think this is pretty much an identification slide.
This is identification, yes. Servicing is coming, yeah. I guess it draws your question from the order that you came.
Yeah, yeah. But, and I think we've always, we've worked hard, we've been strong on identifying, make sure that we're using tools that will identify kids, different types of tools. And that's been a good success though. But yeah, the service is always the, I remember, the true.
Yeah. Okay, so there's no other questions on identification? Okay. This is just a continuation of that and then transitioning into servicing. So one of the ways that we help ensure equity, that was a part of the Equity Audit, is the use of special considerations. So the, oh, the law is very specific that you can use special considerations for barriers in identifying kids. So this is the special considerations list that we use to help kids, to help identify kids who have some sort of barrier to learning that's masking their giftedness. So gifted committees at each school use this as a part of the process for identification. So that's just a part of the excellence gaps that I already talked about. Again, talent development starts as early as possible. There are schools, I know a lot, you wanted to know what they're doing in primary talent pools. So response lessons in the classes, the work of the Javits Grant at Western Kentucky and some work with Jonathan Plucker. They use response lessons with, starting in pre-K, to start identifying those creative thinkers and logical thinkers and using response lessons. You can find that at WKU, I can send you the link.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. We have been, or I have been at schools, at faculty meetings and in PLCs, just training teachers for different ways to look for diverse learners. And then how to meet the needs of those diverse learners when you already have so many other diverse learning needs in the classroom. So I work with individual teachers, I work with grade level teams, I work in PLCs, I've been to faculty meetings, just building that knowledge base of both identifying and serving them. We already talked about that the Nigiri Test, which is a huge culturally relevant test that takes away language barriers and like it's a great culturally relevant test for identification. I was very excited that it's one of the screeners that we use. In primary talent pool, as of October, we've been using Primary Education Thinking Skills, which is a curriculum that builds, starting in kindergarten, on multiple types of thinking. And each school has a choice about how they're implementing that. So those are all school-based decisions. So at Northside, for example, they do it through their, they have wind time built into the schedule, so they have enrichment so many times a week and they're doing Primary Education Thinking Skills there. In Simmons, they do it through there. And then they also do it, they do it during their wind time for enrichment and pull-out. And then they're also doing some of it through library and media science, so they're doing it in the library too and learning thinking with reading. So I've been working some with Mindy there. It's just different at every school and that's the way it's designed to be is all service options are school-based decisions. So I can't give you big sweeping overviews other than to say, in October, it was decided that that would be a first step. Because when I came in my first year, that's the program that I used when I was servicing kids to kind of get started and get a feel for the district. And it worked really well. So that's why we were able to start using it in October and it will only build from there. We presented on it at Best Practice Academy the last two summers and teachers came and got familiar with it and then were able to implement it to enrich those top quartile students who need enrichment during the day and some different kinds of thinking skills to be challenged. So that leads us to this slide, which I just wanted to address a couple of the questions that you had. There was a big concern over, oh my gosh, we have five dance kids, what do you even do to service dance kids? And the answer is, I don't know, it's the same problem that every district in Kentucky has when you only have a few kids in an identified area. There are legally some ways that you can do it, which I'll talk about in just a second. But as you can see, there are so many different ways to be gifted that there's not one way for me to answer how they're serviced because we have all of these areas of identification in every class and every school and it ultimately comes down to what happens in the classroom and at the school level. But I can give you some examples. And what it really comes from and addresses another question you had was service options. You asked a lot about differentiation in the classroom, which is a legitimate question. I would say that differentiation happens in every classroom I've ever been, I have never been in a classroom in Woodford County, and where I did not see some kind of differentiation happening. Because differentiation happens in one of three ways, right? It's differentiation by process, like how the students are choosing to learn or being allowed to learn. Differentiation in product, right? Like what they're producing to show what they know. Let's just let that on the line. Process, product. Topic, sorry, the topic, like the topic that they're learning, right? So sometimes they're working on something of an individual interest outside of what the, what they're just working on. But what I want to show you is this is the state gifted student service plan. So when I came, this was also an area of concern when I was hired, was better communication with parents about what was actually being done in the classroom. And the best thing that I can say is that I've worked a lot with teachers because they're doing services, they're just, we're figuring out how to communicate that to parents. So it's not that those things aren't happening, it's figuring out how to communicate it in a way so both sides understand what's happening. If you look, we are ahead of the game in the state. The state came out with a new gifted student service plan. It's on infinite campus. It's not required to be used, but we genuinely, I just decided we were gonna use it. We were gonna be a leader in it, not behind the game and waiting to be told we had to do it. So we've been using it now for two years. So this is our second year with it. It identifies the student's gifted area and then underneath it, those are all of the legal ways that you can service gifted students. So while it's a great question to ask how students are being differentiated for, there is a multitude of other ways that you can be servicing kids. They may not be receiving differentiated instruction. That may not be what they, a lot of them are, that's what they have, but that may not be the way. They might be having seminars, they might be having enrichment, they might be doing independent studies. So the law is very specific that for each area of identification, they have to have two service delivery options. But they don't have to be differentiation for a cluster group or for individual study in the classroom. So this is what the first page of the gifted student service plan looks like. It goes home in the fall. Parents receive it in the fall. There is a comment section on the bottom. There's not a lot of commenting that happens right at the beginning of the year. But twice a year, parents receive this, which is a gifted progress report, and it is worlds better than what we did have. than what we did have, which was the dropdown menus, which were useless. I'm a parent of a gifted student as well, so, I mean, they were useless. It was just a dropdown menu and you were just going through the motions. There are some schools that are really leading the way with this and are getting a tremendous amount of individualized comments and feedback. We've got a lot from the parent surveys that we do and the teacher surveys that we do. We've got a lot of positive feedback about the new gifted service plans, that they're, they feel like they know more about what's going on. More teachers are commenting. So last year, there was only one box for teachers to comment, but we asked for multiple boxes and now multiple teachers can leave comments about what they're doing. By no means are we perfect at this, but it is worlds better than what it was.
And are we able to enter individualized comments?
Yes.
Or is it still?
No, it is not. They type right in there, they type in there. And teachers and PLCs that I've worked with, the middle school has really been a leader in it, but the PLCs that I've worked with, we talk about what good comments are and what, you know, parents want to know. And I talk about, hey, this is what I see in your classroom and this is how you communicate it to parents, that this is what you're doing for their kids. So this is what the GSSPs look like. I know that you mentioned it would be helpful to have more information like this in a parent conference and I would say, ask for it, right? Like the, I think that schools could put that into that, but it's not really, I mean, I would just ask for it, because there's not a teacher who couldn't communicate what they're doing for gifted kids in their classroom.
Can you go back one?
Yeah.
On the different options at the bottom, are there any statistics on what is most effective? You know, trends nationwide or identifiers like that, is that being studied?
No, not as far as effective, because it's so individualized, like that, it would be like saying, are there things that are effective for certain special education outlier? Like it's so individualized. There are some kids, you know, in Frankfurt yesterday, we saw two musics, two high school musicians from Gatton and Craft Academy at Moorhead and at Western who had composed music and, you know, played music. And for a kid like that, they're going to be something different than a kid who is doing real published scientific work. So it is so individualized that you could find success stories in really any of those. There's, there has been some on specialized counseling services, just because of the unique social emotional needs, often of anyone who's an outlier, which is what gifted kids are, so there's been a lot of focus on specialized counseling and social emotional learning. And several schools have special groups during enrichment time and remediation time, that they, they do a lot of that in Woodford County. We're blessed to have that, social workers and counselors and things that work with those small groups of students to provide specialized counseling services that are specific to the needs of gifted kids, so.
Thank you.
And there are some, obviously, that in Woodford County, we do well, that we do really well, and some we haven't really explored. I know that I've presented before the idea of consortium, which is, we only have five identified dance kids. Maybe Anderson County only has seven identified dance kids in Mercer, Heskey, you know, like you can find surrounding counties and it's that collaboration. So some of these are underutilized statewide, that I think that there's potential for growth there. I think consortium is one, like working with districts around you, just like you said, kids to technical school in Fayette County. It's no different for the other, for other kids that need those things.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, I heard something that, so we're required to provide two alternative delivery options?
Correct.
And one, so if you're gifted in reading, it's not necessary that you would get differentiation in the classroom, you could have two others in the classroom?
That's correct. There are, yeah.
So you could like maybe have a special thing that you go to once a month or whatever?
That's correct.
Or?
There are days you could do that and you could, I don't know, some other thing, but that everyday differentiation? Correct.
In the classroom, that's required.
Statewide, I would say that's a majority, yeah. It's, I don't think it's the, it's not the right way to go for me, but I don't know.
So for instance, in some of those core subjects like math or science or reading, is differentiation in the classroom one of our service options in the other ones? Or is that in school?
In Woodford County, it's a school-based decision, so the gifted coordinator works within the school. When they're creating these plans, they look at every identified area, especially when they're developing their schedules, right, I'm going to talk to you about more, but when they're developing their schedules, they look at the needs of their kids and then they try to plan time during the day, like the kids were within a, art identification, I wonder are you going to fit within their schedule, yeah.
And then a family, other question I would have, do we do survey parents or students or teachers on how to do that?
Once a year. It's required by here, right?
How does it require?
Yep.
Have, was that posted to us last year?
It was, it was.
Okay. Go back and look at that. So when does that come out?
Um, it varies. It'll probably, I was waiting until the first round of GSSPs went home and I think, or the progress reports, so we could get more reliable data on parent feedback from our second full year doing GSSPs this way. And the, the last round of them just went home last week, so the survey.
Okay, but it's not necessarily a thing of the year.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, so we could be expecting something like that?
I can do, I can send a link whenever I'm ready to send the link to the parents.
Yep.
Right?
And how long after that, you give them a certain amount of time to fill it out?
I do, I actually clean it open, like they could go to last year's, like I don't really ever close it, because if they want to leave feedback, they can leave feedback.
So at any time we wanted to record, we could at least get what's been submitted up to that point, because that's not a deadline.
Correct.
Okay. And did you send those left from last year?
They were whenever I did the gifted update. I don't remember them when it was.
Okay.
I know I did it, but I don't remember when it was. But I can resend it as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Go back, if you have any questions, people have an answer to one of your questions?
Yes, thank you.
The state averages?
Oh, okay, great.
There, so the average state score for African Americans, students that compose it was 15.9. For Hispanic students, the state average was 17. And for Indians who launched, the state average was 17.2.
Okay, so now that's updated on this slide too, that we have that.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Martha. You are Johnny on this.
So I think, I think I have answered, I'm just reviewing my notes here to make sure. I think I have answered all the questions that were brought up related to giftedness. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
It is, that's a. It is. Does anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, I think we will move on to our next agenda item. Did you have somebody else to start? Oh, I got a second, okay. So now we'll move into our regular agenda. The first item, Item A, is approve the community forum location and flyer. We all have a flyer in promise, I'm gonna, so we need to decide on a location, so this is going to be concluded. The flyer now says the high school gymnasium. I don't have an issue with that, I don't know if anyone else does. The only problem I kind of see with that is just the acoustics and there's not like really, you know, people put it on both sides and all that, so, but it is obviously the largest place we have, but that would be my only concern. Sometimes we've had things in there, people can't hear, it's hard to set it up where everybody can see everything, so that would be my only concern with that one, but I don't know if anyone else shares that or has an alternative suggestion.
Martha Hawkins, we have like the big screen, like.
We can do two big screen, just like what we do for our opening day.
Yeah.
We could have people on one side that would see 600 or so people if we used the top and the bottom and then we could have two, two big screens, so I think that would be.
Okay.
Doable.
As long as we've got our acoustic setup, because there's nothing more frustrating than to go to one of these things and take your time, you can't hear and hear clearly and have that all tested and know that it's going to be working when people arrive. Is there any other information or feedback on this?
No, I think the flyer looks great. I like the, the design, you know, Langy this, it looks nice.
Thank you. And it says funding options, you know, we had a pretty detailed, I think that's broad enough, you know, we will, I did confirm with Hillier Lions today that they will be there, I think the architect will be there, so they might have some things to present too, that may not fit into the category of funding options, but I think we can allow for that, that presentation too, I think that this will cover it.
So we'll post this in the Woodford Sun and on the school website, is that correct?
Yes, we, we will have to update the options because those have changed since we first looked at this in September. But yes, we will get this out, probably have schools send it out in their email newsletters, those types of things to be able to advertise, but yes.
So I would be interested if the rest of the board members are okay with the title Funding Options for a New Woodford County High School. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I think the architect might have some things that, but that will also include costs, which are relevant, so. As long as we're clear on that. All right, so, any more discussion on this? You have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the community forum location and flyer before us, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You can go both ways. All right, motion passed is fine, you don't get two votes.
No.
All right, Item B, quite long. I just put this language in there because that was something that we had received. I will let Mr. Wilson take this over, if you want to read the motion or the item agenda or describe it how you want to.
The superintendent and I have been working on getting this prioritized list for a couple of months now and I think we have an agreement that, he said February 13th, but I think February 11th should be two days earlier and then that would give us time to review it before our planning meeting on the 18th. And I've moved that we approve Item B.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I move.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have several concerns. First, I'm concerned about transparency of this agenda item. Last week, this same item was tabled at the board meeting after numerous comments from community members stating, asking us to unrestrict funds and to limit cuts as much as possible. I'm concerned because this is a very important agenda item that was added to this evening's special agenda with little notice to the public. I'm uncertain why this item is now being brought back up after it was tabled last week. Can anyone explain this?
This was on the agenda last week.
It was on the agenda last week.
I think Mr. Wilson tabled it, I'm not sure why, I don't think he explained that. So I'm not sure it was for the reason that you stated and then as a tabled motion, we put it back on. It was when we, and I am a little confused, because when I asked for amendments to the agenda last week, there was no talk of removing this when it was on the agenda last week, so it was tabled and I put it on this week at his request. And I would say also that there's not, it's kind of a circular thing, like if we unrestrict money, if we know what expenses are going to have to be cut, then we'll know better if we want to unrestrict that money, because we'll know what's at stake, we'll know what's happening. So that might make, you know, that'll be a fuller information when that decision's made. But as far as procedurally, he requested I put it back on after it was tabled last week and we did it. And it was put in proper notice with the rest of the agenda.
My second concern is, I wonder if an attorney cracked the language for the item and if so, do you know the cause? More importantly, who authorized this expense? I don't remember it coming before the board for approval. It is these types of continued actions that caused me to bring an attorney protocol before the board at our last meeting for approval. Unfortunately, it was voted down. At this point, I'm not sure that this is a legal agenda item based on the failure of the board to receive prior approval if there was an attorney fee associated.
Mr. Wilson, do you know the language for this?
The language came from Mr. Chenoweth, because it was necessary, because I've been trying for the last several months to, to get this add. The attorney, Mr. Chenoweth, said that it was completely within our scope to ask for the superintendent to provide this.
Did Mr. Chenoweth think it was necessary? Did he think that we should receive this without a motion and above, but I think we went forward with it.
I tried that.
Right, because it came to the fact that, yeah, that this was going to be necessary to actually get the list without just a request from the superintendent.
I guess I would also just like to have someone explain and provide an example of what expense would go in each column.
Whatever the superintendent believes would least affect the teachers and the students in our classroom to offset the deficits that he has talked about down to two months.
So I guess, I understand, you know, the budget consideration list, the budget priority list is actually a budget cut list, and that's okay. But my question is, what, what are the three subsets? When I read through this, it just, it's not very clear to me, like what would be an example of what go in, for instance, column number one that says expenditures for educational programs and services mandated to be provided by federal law statutes and regulations and/or state law statutes and regulations. Column two would be necessary supplemental expenditures needed to implement mandated educational programs and services. And then column three is educational programs and services that have been discretionately provided for enrolled students at Woodford County schools. I think it would be helpful to have an example for each column, so, because I'm just not clear.
Mr. Hawkins, this is something that's being asked of you, not, you know, not a board member to provide, so, and what questions do you have?
What questions do I have?
Well, I mean, do you have concerns about this, this item?
I'm, I understand one, subset one and subset three, I, I don't necessarily fully understand two.
So would, like, the district technology Chromebooks fall under subset two, Mr. Hawkins?
I think those would be discretionary.
Would, do you have an example, Mr. Wilson?
No, I don't. Mr. Chenoweth, I think if we pass this, I think Mr. Chenoweth can help you on that.
Another concern I had is just that it seems like this is, this list that we're not even sure we understand has to be compiled in two days by the superintendent. I really believe that Mr. Hawkins should involve the staff and the community before bringing, you know, a prioritized cut list. It was obvious at last week's meeting that the public, the community want to be involved.
This list is the starting point to get them involved and we've been talking about this. We mentioned the same thing at the board meeting. When I went to the high school meeting that the superintendent conducted in the meeting at Northside, I said, with the draft budget, we will receive a prioritized list from the superintendent to offset budget cuts, budget revisions, and the criteria would be what is the, what least affects the students and the teachers in our classroom. And there is no way that this can be a surprise. This is not your surprise. It's just not.
I feel like the board should vote on a protocol, should have a protocol, should have a, you know, at least the expectation that he would involve staff and community members before submitting a list. The cuts would involve the staff and the teachers and students. And I just feel like that they should have input on that prioritized cut list. And additionally, I really don't believe two days is sufficient.
Once again, we've been talking about this since November, this is longer than surprise.
And I don't think you're asking for necessarily a cut list at this point. You're asking for an itemized, detailed list for us to be able to look over as a starting point.
And prioritize them.
It's completely our-
This is just a starting point.
Yeah, this is completely our responsibility.
And we do have that five-page document that was prepared and given to us, four or five pages last month, that listed all of the districts, what was it called?
It's just all the expenses.
Yeah, so that is the budget expenditure consideration list that listed the program, the cost per staff, the cost per program, the purpose, and then the impact.
Mr. Hawkins, is this a surprise for you? Honestly?
I didn't say it was a surprise.
This brings it to you. It's a surprise to you.
Yeah.
It's not a surprise to you.
I did ask the question, Hawkins.
I know, but I just, it's not a surprise to you.
I think, Mr. Hawkins, do you feel that the board has a right to ask for a prioritized list if expense cuts are necessary without a vote of the board? I think we've come-
I think on something like this, I think the board should take action in order to move that process forward.
So do you think that as the superintendent and the chief advisor to the board, that we cannot ask you for a prioritized list of expenses without having board action? That if I wanted that, or if we talked about it then, or sent a letter requesting it, that that's not something that would necessarily, that you would need to do without a board action like this?
With all due respect, I believe that-
I'm sorry, let Mr. Hawkins answer. I'm going to go.
I do think when you're talking about an item of this magnitude, it should take board action.
I think, I agree that it would take board action to make the final cuts. But to get your advice, to get a prioritized list, to give us your advice and expertise on what would have the least effect on student achievement, you think that takes board action for us to get that kind of information from you?
Something of this magnitude for a list of prioritized cuts? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, if you feel, I think that that's what, you know, this has been talked about, I agree with Mr. Wilson. So this is what it's come to. We have a board action in front of us, something we've talked about and asked for. And you don't feel that it's in your duties to do that without full board approval, so I think that's where we're here now.
Well, and I would just say, with all due respect, the board does not consist of individuals. It consists of five members who can only act in authority when we are at this table and making those decisions. So if one board member wants a list and one board member doesn't, that's not a board action. It has to be voted on, and the full board should have say. Not one person deciding what shouldn't be included, not one person making the cuts or not making the cuts, not one person asking for a list or not asking for a list. It should be done by the full board. And I feel like, you know, it should be done in a way that involves the community and the teachers and the staff, the students. They're the ones that will be affected by this. I don't understand why we would not want to get that involvement. I understand you're saying this is a starting point, but we have a five-page document that's a starting point that lists all of those things. I'm not sure why we would need another starting point document. And again, I just feel like that should be done by action of the board. Not one member saying, "I would like a list. Please include only athletics." Not another board member saying, "I would like a list. Please include only academics." Not another board member saying, "I would like a list. Please include only this." It has to be the entire board agreeing what the priorities are and what the protocol should be. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to be difficult.
And I think to be clear, I don't think you're trying to insinuate that any board member has said anything about athletics. You're just giving an example.
No, I don't think any board member said those examples. I'm just saying that different people have different priorities. Those could be some of the priorities.
I think, I think some of the confusion here has been for me that I've been able to ask for information from Mr. Hawkins over the years and received it. There's been a real roadblock on this one. It's needed apparently board action, and that's what we have in front of us tonight. He says of something of this magnitude, it would receive, would need board action for the board to be able to get that information from him, our chief advisor. So, you know, this is before us. We can vote on it tonight. I think it does down the road. What is too big, that you're not going to, you know, reaches the level where it takes board action because it's... So I think we're kind of on a sliding thing here now.
Again, I don't see that as the issue. I see the issue is the board needs to ask, but it's not individual board members because individual board members might have different priorities. I did have one final concern. Yesterday, a community member sent me a screenshot of a conversation that was on a Facebook platform. To quote the post, said, "I did just speak to Danny Bradley and inquire. She informed me that they, the Board of Education, will be compiling, will be combing over district financial data in preparation for the town hall community forum scheduled for March the 3rd, tagging V O E member Danny Johnson Bradley as she is best suited to speak to the exact details and/or agenda. This information was news to me. The board did not discuss combing over financial data in preparation for the forum. Oddly enough, another Facebook post surfaced earlier this week discussing the same type of behavior. It is not legal for individual board members to act on behalf of the board. We only have a vote as a board in open meetings." That all five of us, or the majority of three, needs to vote to speak on behalf of the board. I hate to even bring this up, but I don't know how to address this issue. I've asked for training several times, and as individuals, we just don't have the authority to speak or act on behalf of the board. If we are going to act as a cohesive board ever, as has been suggested and I fully support, then we really need to understand the role of board members and what as individuals are authority, where that begins and ends, and where as a board that begins and ends. I just think that's an imperative thing, that we understand those roles and that we abide by the training and the guidelines.
I would like to clarify that. I, what I said, I received a call asking what tonight's agenda was, and one of the parents from the project graduation group had asked for the agenda, and I said it wasn't published yet, and I said it's a data meeting primarily. So it's a special meeting, so there will not be an opportunity for public comment. The person that posted that inferred that it was financial data rather than academic data. I should have clarified that on Facebook, but that was a complete misunderstanding. When I said it was a data meeting, they inferred that. To follow up on what we were actually discussing, is there a policy that shows which items require board action?
When we request information from the superintendent, no, we've not really come up against this before. So that'd be something we need to look at. But there's none to my, do you, are you aware of a policy that?
The only thing that I would clarify is that in the agenda item itself, it says to create for consideration by the Board of Education. So if I'm creating something for the board for consideration, it seems to me that it should be voted on by the board.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Alright, so the next item that we have is a discussion item. It's graduation date. I will start this off, and I'm really not going to take the lead on it. We, we know that we've had a lot of confusion around the graduation date. I think there's two issues that we need to discuss. This is not an action item, so there will be no action on it tonight. In my mind, the two decision, the first decision is who makes this decision? Who makes the decision about the graduation date? I think in the past, it's been the high school, working with parents who... There are many stakeholders in graduation. My opinion, there is no greater stakeholder than a parent and a family of a graduating senior. So, you know, they've come to us to try to get some clarification. There seems to have been some confusion about when the locations open, when it's not. But I think the first thing we need to decide is who would make that decision. Mr. Hawkins, can you give us your opinion on that?
Well, all I can speak to is what's happened in the past. And every year since I've been here, the school has made the determination on the graduation date. And so up to this point, it has been successful. Really have never been any concerns, despite the fact that we graduated at different times. Some have been in the evening, some have been in the morning, some have been in the afternoon. And, but the school tries to look at the impact on all groups and to make the best decision possible, given when venues are available. And so that, that has been the process in the past.
Did we ever receive the data back from the survey that was taken? And how many times have we had graduations since you've been here on a Friday night?
I don't know how many on a Friday night. I know it seemed like we have, but I don't recall specifically. I know we've graduated on Saturday night multiple times. Eight of the 11 graduations have actually been at night since I've been here. Only in the last couple of years have we been able to have more during the day. And that was once we moved to the, to the horse park and we started sharing the venue with other schools and trying to be, working with them and what works best for them because four high schools graduate at the horse park in a matter of one evening and a day, or a day and another day. And so it's trying to coordinate with other schools, but also being cognizant, for example, we worked with the two Franklin County schools. It's fair for them to be able to graduate in back-to-back time slots because of the people that would have to be at both graduations. And so we tried to be cognizant of that and work with them. And so that, again, Friday night, I can't speak to the numbers specifically, but I know that eight of the 11 have been in the evening.
What about the survey situation, Mr. Richardson?
I don't know if Mr. Arnold's here. He said he was going to be here this evening. The survey, 99 students favored Friday, or Saturday, Sunday, and 93 students favored Friday night.
Did we survey parents?
We did. Of the, I think Mr. Arnold opened it up allocating up to two responses per child. So there could be up to about 560 responses, I think. I think there were 190 responses of the five, and then it was 60 to 40 Sunday versus Friday.
60 for Sunday.
60 for Sunday.
And then he also surveyed the staff, and then he surveyed the students who would be performing. And I don't have the percentages on the students who would be performing because obviously that impacts your band, your orchestra, and your chorus. To ensure that you have a good number of students who are there to perform as well, that's important because you want it to be a quality event. It was a greater percentage who were, would be available on Friday night, but I don't have the exact percentages. And I think the staff, it was 83% voted for Friday night.
So Mr. Arnold, I thought indicated that he was going to use this to make a recommendation on a date, but he has not done it yet.
No, he was waiting to detect, to see who was going to ultimately make the decision of setting the date.
Right, and, but he can make a recommendation no matter what, you know? Even if we decide that we were going to be the one setting the date, his recommendation obviously would be very high quality. I have a couple of questions that I think. Is the horse park available on Sunday?
Altec Arena is available, yes.
So when parents, or I kind of felt like the board too, was told that it was not available on Sunday, that was not correct?
I don't believe I said that Altec Arena was not available on Sunday. And again, I'll read the email that we've received from the horse park.
Well, I was just curious that the email we received from you.
It said that Sunday was not a viable option. And the reason being, it said, this is from the events manager, that Split Rock is a new show to the park. That being said, we are unaware exactly how large a crowd it's going to draw in. We're expecting between 500 and 700 horses. It could be more. The Kentucky Dressage Association will have about 200 horses, and May Day usually has 500. On Sunday, each of these shows is required to move out. We will have trucks, trailers, spectators, and vendors for each of these shows leaving at any point in the day. Depending on ride times, etc., it will be pretty much a steady stream of people leaving the park. Late afternoon, early evening will probably be the busiest for horse show traffic. If you are to have your graduation on Friday, horse show traffic will not be an issue. Everyone will be moved in and getting ready for competition by Friday evening, so they should not interfere. Also, please note that if you are on Sunday, you will have to set up your own chairs for the, behind the stage. We set them up for the first graduation, and then anybody else has to move them around accordingly.
So it is viable to do it. It just, they just wanted to, so to say it wasn't viable, wasn't really correct. It was just that they didn't, they just alerted us to some of the issues we should consider when setting the date. Again, this is not an action item to me.
Can I follow, rather than talking about Friday, Sunday, just talk about Saturday? What happened three years ago when we lost the Civic Center in Hartford? I think you led the effort of getting Franklin County and Scott County together to, so we could do it. Because if you did it, if the four of us did it, it would surely help with expenses. Instead of doing $10,000, it would be $2,500. And Saturday was probably the best day out of the weekend, Friday or Sunday. Saturday was the best. Why did we get locked? Why did we get locked out this year?
Well, and just to go back, the first year we were there, all four graduations were on Saturday. And the horse park said, "We can't do that anymore." So that moved one group, one school was going to have to go on Friday evening at that point. Scott County said, "We'll take the Friday evening slot last year." And then Franklin County was fine with the two and the six, so we took the 10 a.m. This year, we were scheduled for the Saturday morning slot again as of October. There was a change in event managers at the horse park. Mr. Ellis was unaware of that. When they contacted him in January, they no longer had us in that Saturday morning slot.
On January 7th, there was an article in Franklin State Journal referring to the February 6th, I mean, not, January 6th, that, the previous Monday meeting, that the Franklin County Board of Education okayed the contract for Saturday, whatever that date is. And they were doing it with Anderson County. Did the Franklin County superintendent not reach out to you or anything?
We knew that Anderson County was interested, but I did not know that they were finally in the mix until-
But it seems like if we've done it, how would Anderson County get our spot? Did the Franklin County superintendent like get your opinion on that?
I was never contacted.
Really?
Part of it is because our contact with the horse park is Mr. Ellis. Because he is the senior sponsor and the advisor who coordinates all of our graduation things.
I don't think it's proper for us to talk about that. But did you reach out to them about us doing it again with them this year? To Franklin County, you know, are we going to do it like we did last year when we had-
We typically touch base after the graduation's over, that, hey, we're going to continue doing this again. But again, Mr. Ellis does all of the contact for it.
I don't think you mentioned this one.
Yeah.
Have we ever considered doing it the weekend after? Because I feel like a big part of this-
Mr. Richardson, so the Franklin County didn't contact you at all, and they just, then Anderson County, never talked to you?
I, I did not know that we were not on Saturday until Mr., till our senior sponsor contacted me after he was notified in early January.
So you think they hoodwinked you?
I can't answer that. I mean, Anderson County, we were unaware.
Yep.
Going forward on this, we do have a meeting on February 18th. I don't know if we made any suggestions or, you know?
How long do we have to be able to schedule this date? We keep pushing it back and back.
And Allison, I think you were saying, can we do it the weekend later?
I'm not talking about this year, but have, I think that a big problem that we're following is it's a holiday weekend. is it's a holiday weekend. And I understand that there's a group of people who, who go to this every year, and it cuts their holiday in half, and then there's another group of people who only get this once in their whole entire life, and they want to have a full day to be able to enjoy it, and I understand.
And they have family coming in.
But that's the group we need to focus on, are the kids who do this once. Some of them get this one time in their whole lives.
And that means, I agree.
And they need a full day for that, for family. And, I mean, that's, that's an emotional day that sticks with them forever, and I hate to see them rush it, you know, from 4:30 when their parents get off of work to bam, trying to graduate and do everything that they do on those days.
The only issue with doing it the week after is that, let's say that the calendar were to fall like it would be this year, you would have potentially nine days between the last day of school and when you would graduate.
Right.
And that's not a good situation either. And so, and it would then shift all of the costs to us for that. And I don't even know if the horse park's available. You know, that's the other piece, is that they have been accommodating to us on that weekend, working with multiple schools.
So am I clear now, Scott County is no longer part of this?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the cost is all ours?
Anderson County to Scott County.
No, it's still split between the four schools.
It's just Anderson, it's Anderson instead of Scott.
Okay, I was saying, since ours isn't gonna be on the same day.
We still split the total cost of the rental and all of that.
For the weekend.
For the weekend.
Is there a difference between doing it on Sunday or Friday and the cost?
No.
And when they said that we had to set up chairs if we do it on Sunday, is that, the chairs for the graduates, or is that just the chairs for the podiums?
So behind the stage, so that.
We would probably have to shift some around for the, for the student area, and then if, if we wanted to do the, the band and the chorus and the orchestra behind the stage.
But the graduate, the majority of those chairs are the graduates.
There's been some on the sides for the, for the staff, yes.
Okay. So again, the parent results were, what, on the survey?
60 to 40.
And the graduates were?
51, 49. 60, 40%.
Yeah. So the graduates, and by a narrow, narrow margin, and the parents, by a larger margin, are hopeful for Sunday.
Yeah, and that's probably about a third of the responses.
So, okay.
190 out of potentially 560.
And how many?
Because we have about 280 graduates. So it's about two-thirds of the kids responded.
And so it's still that close even after days longer?
Yeah, 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 he closed it after.
Okay.
Okay, so I, on our February 18th meeting, do we want to have something on the agenda to take an action on this? The action being that the board will decide, or that the board will pick a date, or we have Mr. Arnold here with the recommendation, and we can accept that recommendation or not? Dan, you making that, what, what is your suggestion?
I just think that puts him in a hard spot. If you would come here and ask him.
Well, he's, okay. I guess since they've always made the decision, I don't know why a recommendation is difficult. If they've always made the decision on the first.
I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to make the decision, then let's not make him make a recommendation if we're not gonna honor it.
I think his recommendation was probably already setting it for Friday night, so I think the board could decide without a recommendation.
Well, I'm not sure it was. I thought he was wanting to weigh in on the survey results, and I don't know what his opinion is after the survey results, so.
What's your recommendation on this?
I think the board needs to decide who will make the decision. Either it's the school decision or it's a board decision. We're fine either way. But I, I, I agree, I don't think it's fair to ask Mr. Arnold to say.
But based on, based on the survey, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have a recommendation necessarily, although we wanna talk with Mr. Arnold and others at the, at the high school. But to me, I think we just have to decide who's gonna decide.
Well, maybe that's the question to put on the February 18th agenda.
And then, just to follow up with Ms. Richardson's comment, probably the sooner the better. You know, I hate to keep putting it on the agenda to discuss, or to get information, or to do this, to do that, to do the other. We really do just need to decide, is the board going to do this, or are we gonna delegate this to the school like we've always done? And then, of course, you know, there's also prom, there's also homecoming, and there are other events, you know, graduation at the elementary schools and also at the middle school. If we're gonna take over setting those dates, then we probably just need to have a list so that we can go ahead and get those done as early as possible. So we just have to decide.
Or I think it's, you could say, due to the extenuating circumstances of this particular fallout with the miscommunications between superintendents and circumstances beyond our control, that's why it is.
I don't think there was miscommunication between superintendents. I mean, it was, I didn't receive any communication, so.
I didn't mean that, or a lack of communication, I should have said. I didn't mean it like that.
But really, the lack of communication falls on the horse park. I'm sorry, it is, it is in their lap. When they had a change in event managers, the ball got dropped. And that's not on us. It's not on Anderson County, it's not on Franklin County. It is on them.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry, you're, anyway, new circumstance.
Right, yeah, right.
I can't ever remember a time before a moment on graduation, I can't. Maybe I'm wrong, but I can't remember it. And I will, I will follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, so do we mark this on the agenda for the 18th? That's one board member, we're gonna use the speakers of board to have an agenda item as to who's gonna make the determination for graduation date. I'll add it.
Mr. Hawkins, do we run the risk of losing both dates?
I don't think so, no, no, not, I mean, the dates are reserved, I mean, we've got the week, so.
I do think that, I do not think that this is going to run the, where we're going to take over the orchestra concert date, or as something that's similar. This is a unique situation, it's something we have to enter into a contract with, which is our job. It is also, it's the highlight, emotions run high, so it's a very unique, very different than an orchestra concert date or an elementary school date. I don't, I don't foresee that leaning over into that. But unless there's some kind of big objection, I'll just put it on the February 18th agenda to vote on who's gonna make the decision and what that decision will be, if the board votes to do it. So be ready, we'll be ready to say, if we vote no, we're gonna leave it up to the school, that's that. If we vote yes, we're going to set the date. We need to know what date we want to set. So I'll put that on the February 18th for an action item for that planning meeting, unless anyone else has any more discussion on this. Okay, next on the agenda is. Next, we have a super affirmative evaluation, which is an executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? It's for KRS 61.8101A.
What move?
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There won't be any action after this, Bob. There'll be no more, this is the last thing on our agenda, so thank you all for coming.